Our next, our next idling agenda is the unfinished business and the request of reimbursement of billiards and expenses of the Board of Directors of the Economic Development Authority. Mr. David, have you got a presentation or a talk for us?
Good morning. Good to be here and welcome all of you and welcome to EDA. I'm just finishing my first year on the EDA and I have found it fascinating. And I'm sure as if you get into it more, you will find it fascinating also. Our next meeting will be this coming Friday at 8:00 a.m. We have a number of items on there we're going to discuss, trying to clear a little bit of our agenda there. For some reason or other, the Chair is very hesitant to sign anything that doesn't have public board approval. And therefore, we will have a meeting to have approval on a number of items this Friday so that they can keep moving along. We are continuing to work forward, move forward in finding out what happened and what we should be doing about it and what we can do, how to see that it doesn't happen again. I found a fascinating new book this year, Malcolm Gladwell's Talking to Strangers. If anybody wants to look at, just look overview at the community and how could this happen, it's a fascinating read. You have before you a carryover item from the last meeting and that was in October. The Board of Supervisors, County Administration, and the members of the EDA back prior to December of 2018 were charged with indictments and those cases were dismissed. And they had legal fees, all incurred by all the individuals involved. Legal fees for the County Administration and the Board of Supervisors were approved to be reimbursed. And we have requested that the EDA members who were involved in this were also be considered for reimbursement. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the EDA or this matter if you would like.
Any questions? Ms. Fox? Ms. Colours?
I have questions, but I think my questions and Mr. Hammond, I'm not sure if this because of if it could go to a work session or a closed session to answer the questions I have and how, what our options are with this.
A work session, yes. And Ms. Oates had sent me an email asking if it could be postponed so, because I think she has some questions as well. It was a bit slow in responding. I'm sorry, I was off for Christmas. But yeah, it would be very appropriate to have a work session. I'm, I would have to think about whether or not the state law would allow a closed session on this because you'd be considering whether or not to spend $36,000 in monies. And I'm not sure, sitting here, I can't think of a reason that we could go into closed session to, to ask those questions. Perhaps you and I could, could talk later and we can see exactly what you want maybe to ask him to see if there is a, because FOIA, as you know from the FOIA training, you can only go in for specific things.
Correct.
You know, it's, it's not consultation with the county attorney because I don't represent the EDA. But you know, depending on what you want to ask him, it's best if you can ask in a work session anyway. I'm sure you probably feel the same way. But if there is some, some reason for sensitivity, maybe we can, we can find a way to get the information you need.
And, and my reluctance with this is coming in, this is our first day and we've only been privy to so much information. I just feel like doing my due diligence, I'd like to have more information before making this or any decision, not singling you out. I'm going to be doing this for a lot of things. So you know, that's my feeling.
Mr. Carter?
I think it's, it's ready.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting and that we have a work session with respect so that we can ask the questions that we need to ask regarding our obligation as a board to reimburse these fees.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Is a second required? So let me just clarify that the motion to table is, is totally fine and that would be to the next meeting in January. The motion to have a work session, you'll need to have some-
As a separate-
Some action. Well, you know, the board will have to get together and come up with a date for that.
We actually plan to take care of that later in this agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
What did you say? I'm sorry. I think it was a comment you just made at the work session.
We actually plan to take care of that and later in this agenda when we talk about the schedule for the meetings in the upcoming year.
Okay.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Okay? Yeah.
But you, excuse me, but you are planning on postponing this until 21st?
Till the 21st. We have, yeah, we need a, I guess a vote.
Mrs. Downs, could I get a roll call please?
Mr. Fox?
Hi.
Ms. Colours? Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oates? Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Need a call in Friday, sir.
Yes, sir. With bells on, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Any additions or subtraction?
I would like to pull for discussion number two.
I believe I can get a motion now.
I'm going to read out the consent agenda with the exclusion of item two.
All approved. Mrs. Downs, could we get a roll call on that, please? Do you want a second?
You need a second.
Mr. Fox?
Mr. Fox, second.
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Now, we need to talk about item number two.
I would like to make a motion to retake that into a work session so we can discuss those roads on individual basis. I went this weekend and took my list and wrote each one of those roads and I just have questions and I feel like before I could vote on them as part of consent or an individual, that I would like to have a work session with the group to discuss them individually to see if we're all on the same page with the prioritization of those roads.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add a couple, I don't disagree about the work session, just add a couple of comments. So these are ones that the Board has previously requested and we have a process, application process, we have to apply to VDOT. It's gone from an annual process to a biannual every two years. And so these are projects that have previously been requested by the Board and have been prioritized or approved by VDOT. We'll go through that cycle. We just did this last year, so the next cycle would be 2021, correct, Bob? And I'm looking back at Bob because I may need him to come up in a second. But so part of the process is that VDOT wants us to commit in a resolution, we commit to funding the share of the projects that have been approved. Now, when we fund the share, if they are a county-only project like a Rockland Road, we're providing 50% of the match, dollar-for-dollar match, the county's committing to that portion. If it's a sanitary district like a Grove Farm Road, we're committing to, no, or not about that, or Young's Drive, Old Oak Lane, we're providing 25%. In that case, Shando Farms is providing this 25%. That's what at this point VDOT's really wanting to make sure, it's a county glue to make that contribution. Now, the Board certainly could go and say, you know what, we don't want to fund Cloth Farm Mill or Old Oak Lane, we don't want to do those projects, in which case we would forfeit that money back to VDOT and not move forward to the project. So I just, this isn't the opportunity, we're not making the request for the projects, these projects were already requested, this is committing our local share of the funding. So I just wanted to clarify that and we certainly could put that on the next work session if the Board would like to.
I think Ms. Colours and I don't understand the process about the prioritization and how that is determined within, and we'd just like to understand it before we vote yea or nay on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd support going into a work session mostly for the power of prioritization of these roads because I think probably some of them has changed, priority might have changed on some of them and I think we could prioritize them a little bit better if you had a work session.
Any additional comments or questions concerned? Mr. Kirk?
Do we have any type of tightening string of when we need to ask a resolution?
I think we're okay waiting to the next work session.
And the other thing, just to clarify, like you said, these projects have already been approved, submitted, VDOT's already approved, they're funding, they're trying to make sure that we are going to match it. And we get in a work session and if the will of this Board is to strike one of these projects, we give that money back to VDOT. But we can't necessarily add anything at this point.
No, we would simply, the next time around, the next time we have an opportunity to make application-
That would be the next time, maybe like two years from now. So, okay, there you go, I understand the need to, to be more familiar with this and the whole thing, so I have no problem with that. I just want to clarify those things.
No, I certainly don't want to so lose the opportunity for revenue, but I don't think, I'm doing my due diligence, focusing on things that I have questions on. So if we've got the time, and I, we could sit here and go through each one of these here, but I'm not sure everybody else wants to sit here to do that. And you're welcome to go in a work session if you do want to hear it. And that's, that's where I'm going consideration wise because I have a lot of questions.
Mr. Chairman? I'd be interested in taking, reviewing these, some of these roads individually with, perhaps with one, one member of staff before, before I make a decision.
Any other comments, additional concerns?
Just like you said too, I believe, like for instance, Old Oak Lane, that's in Shando Farms, the price, 1.1 million. Half of that's coming from VDOT, 25% of that's coming from the county and the other 25% is coming from the Shando Farms sanitary district. So we put up $250,000, a million dollar benefit and had the road approved. And I guess Chairman, maybe that is your district unless you have the leader over Shando Farms, I'm sure you went out there and consulted, they have quite a number of unpaid roads and dirt roads and I think we've been making pretty good progress over the past several years as far as bringing them up to speed. It hasn't happened overnight, it's a long process.
And that's, that's one of the concerns that I think a lot of us have, me included. I have one, I haven't visited Shenandoah Shores and Shenandoah Farms both just to see their roads and I do have concerns about those. We, Shenandoah Farms has had 30, or excuse me, 74% of the roads that we've got listed in our packet here, that's been either done or in the works. That's an extraordinary thing that the Board and Mr. Childress has accomplished with VDOT over the last few years. And none of these things take an inordinate amount of time just to make them come together. And I think the members of our new board just need to understand that. So I, I think it is in the best interest of us just postponing until the 21st.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm completely, I think that is something to understand and to ask additional questions and the whole thing.
All right.
And I think we need to look at the equity of, there are other areas of the county that have dirt roads and things that would like to be brought up as well.
We'll talk about that too.
So I make a motion that we table this discussion and take it to a work session.
Got second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next thing is item K, request for the 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled. Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, in your packet, the Board meets the first Tuesday each month historically at 9:00 a.m. and the third Tuesday each month at 7:00 p.m. Sessions include July when the Board meets only once, on the third Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. throughout our vacations around the July Fourth holiday. And when Election Day falls on the first Tuesday in November, the Board meets the Wednesday after Election Day. In December, the Board meets the second Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. due to the Christmas holiday. The proposed schedule for 2020 is listed there in your packet and certainly I heard the comments earlier. We typically, we book this room every Tuesday night, the Council books it for Mondays. We have had other nights when we've done work sessions on say the middle Tuesday, things like that, whether that's in the evening or day or late afternoon, but whatever, and what the Board has to say as far as the schedule. Do you have any answering questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we add an additional meeting on the, on the second Tuesday. I've checked with Emily and this room is for, you know, a general work session when we decide to use it.
She said it's at 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m. so that they clearly can participate and we can talk through and work through all the questions that the new Board members have.
Do we need a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second Tuesday of each month at 7:00 p.m. we'll have a, a work session that the public is invited to. Item number L, request for two, Board of Supervisors and committee assignments. Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, in your packet, you've got a list of committee assignments. There are 17 assignments there and we proposed to add an 18th, which, that being the firm list, the Chief Advisory Committee to add a position as well. As we've talked about previously, we've got some proposed appointments to that list and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the schedules and meeting dates or anything else between Emily and I. I think we could answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
Should we run down a list of the community notes what the committees are and so they know who's assigned to what?
I'll be glad to read them all.
Would you do that? Thank you.
So as proposed, Agricultural District Advisory Committee would be Ms. Colours, the Airport Commission, Mr. Fox, the Building Committee, Mr. Fox and Ms. Colours, the Community Policy and Management Team, Ms. Colours, the Emergency Management Director is by state code the Chair and Board, Department of Rural and Volcanic Advisory Committee, Mr. Carter, the Nolan Shando Valley Regional Commission, Ms. Colours and Ms. Oates with Karen Logan as an alternate, Parks and Rec Commission, Mr. Carter, Pete Blankford, Mr. Carter, RSW Regional JRO Committee, Ms. Oates with Ms. Colours as an alternate, Sanos Public Labor Board, Ms. Oates, the Talent County Liaison Committee is the Chair and we alternate between the other four Board members starting with the alphabetical. Warren County Personnel Committee is all Board members, Sanitation Authority is all Board members, Warren County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Ms. Colours, Warren County Wellness subject appeals board, Mr. Carter with Ms. Colours as an alternate, Winchester Regional Airport Authority, Mr. Fox, and the Fire and Rescue Chief Advisory Committee, Ms. Colours.
Do we, Board of Supervisors, make the 2024 Board Committee appointments as presented?
I second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number M, which is the Meeting Policy and Procedures and Public Hearing Guidelines. Mr. Stanley and Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, in your packet, you've got a copy of the Board's Meeting Policies and Procedures document. As amended several times, and then Mr. Hammond can send out some, some other possible adjustments as well. The Board can reconsider, some of the policy and procedures of public hearing guidelines as part of this annual organizational meeting which we're having today. Also, you've got proposed, again, changes to the policy and procedures document regarding moment of silence, beginning of each agenda, which has been included as well. And I know you may have some additional questions and comments and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hammond.
I've sent you a couple of letters about this and I just want to clarify a couple of things. I was asked by Mr. Vane before the meeting whether or not this, this could be put off until the 21st meeting, so everyone can have a chance to thoroughly look at them. I have proposed a fair number of changes and that would be fine if you want to do that, the existing rules would carry over. I wanted to clarify that the Board will need to decide whether or not to allow electronic communication at meetings, so before members sit, et cetera, that they could from a remote location participate. Our last rules don't clarify whether or not you actually can do that. Also, our, our last rules need to have some changes made to be compliant with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Probably the most substantial change that I have suggested is, and you know, from sitting here, is to move the public comments period right before new business and to, right now we have two public comments periods. One is only 20 minutes and that's, you know, it is before new business, but it's only 20 minutes. And people are only to comment on new business. And so the issue with that is it's not that long before new business is taken, 20 minutes. And then secondly, you end up interrupting some people who don't understand that they're only supposed to be talking about new business like, like happened today. So if you consolidate into one public comments period, then people can say anything they want to and if you have that before the new business, then they can have their comments before action is taken. I have put in here the carryover to 60 minutes, but you can choose any time you want to. Currently, you've got 20 minutes and 60 minutes, so you could make that period 80 minutes, you could make it 90 minutes, you could make it anything you want it to be. I think it's a good idea to have a time limit so that there isn't a filibuster because you guys have important, you know, business to do. But the amount of time that you allow the public to speak is entirely up to you. I also am suggesting that we have this additional new business item put in there after the closed session. And sometimes that happens where you will want to talk to me in, in closed session about something before making a final decision. And that would enable you to do that that very night instead of waiting till the next meeting or amending the agenda. And of course, if you amend the agenda, then you've got to do that right on the fly and the public doesn't have as much notice as they otherwise would that that was something that you were thinking about taking up that night. So I've also deleted the section incorporating Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order does not always comply with state law. I've also been doing this for 23 years. I've never actually had to use Robert's Rule of Order in all the meetings that I've been to, Doug's told me he actually has. So I guess it comes up sometimes. It's not that critically important either way, that's my recommended change. And I'm happy to answer any questions that we have today about this. I'm also happy to answer questions if Board members want to still consider this and in the next meeting, if that's going to be the pleasure of the Board to push this off to the next meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to pushing it off to the next meeting, but also what I would like for us to consider is 45 minutes time limit at the first part of the meeting and 15 minutes at the end of the meeting. Because we know that typically people don't wait around for the second meeting, end of the meeting, but I think it would be a good opportunity if there is a question or some response to what we've talked about, just have the end of turn, can't just change what we're doing, but make it 45 minutes in the front and 15 minutes out at the end of the meeting. But that's my suggestion.
Any question? First, the first session with 45 minutes, is that strictly going to the item only agenda or is that anything?
That would be anything.
And I guess the other thing too is if you did that and the full 45 minutes was huge, that has to just remove back the public hearing. The public hearings are so you can start at 7:30, if you cannot start before then, you can start after that. And one of the concerns I have with some of the public hearings is that sometimes people come, they have their architect, they have their engineer, they have their attorney and while they sit there, they're being charged for those costs. So that's one concern I have there. But I'm okay waiting till next meeting too. I know we got these probably three, four weeks ago from Mr. Hammond and had a chance to look at it, but you know, maybe work on it, consider some, a little bit more time and see what else, if that's important, it's on to, or whatever changes.
Did you mean the limit to just 15 minutes at the end or? I don't know if this is proper or not, since Mr. Hammond helped. We've got enough people here. I remember last year, what controversial thing it was and it seems like people are satisfied. Can we ask for a show of hands, how many more change or who want to leave it as it is, just to get a perspective from them since we do have, here are my, either.
How many people have really had a chance to look at it in this group?
Well, and, and I'm fine with putting it off and we can, I've just-
That's part of the whole point.
Yeah. Not to vote on it today to do it, put it in a work session so we bring it back, but you know, everybody here raises their hands, leave it alone. And what's the point of even taking it to a work session, leave it alone?
What about the other 25,000 people that aren't here?
Well, then we still bring it to a work session.
I'd be there, we've got a work session scheduled anyway next week, add this on that item.
I just figured you're going to give us at least a beginning idea.
Mr. Badger, do you have a question?
I'm going to let the transparency, if at the end of the meeting, let everybody speak. That's been the problem in the past, they don't want to hear what the people's got to say.
Well, you still get the opportunity to speak, it's just the amount of time.
I understand, it's been cut down. We don't want to cut it down. That's what it's been in the past. Mr. Carter was opposed to it even talking at all. I recall I was here and he recalls it too.
So if we have show of hands, do, should we change it, should we leave it alone? How many people think that we should just leave it alone?
I agree. No, let's see.
How many people think that we need to change it? More people are saying leave it alone.
Do we need a motion to take it for work session? I make a motion to take this to a work session and bring it back at the next meeting.
Thank you for your input, by the way.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes. And we'll put that on the session for the 14th. Okay, now, now we have the opportunity for our general public presentation, comment period approximately 60 minutes. Emily, do we have a people?
Yes. Sorry. Did you want to say anything else?
Yes. You have that. You always have something to say, I appreciate it.
You are right. Paul Mabber, 1221, Valley B Drive. I am very impressed of what I'm seeing today, the amount of questions, the putting off of voting, which in the past, voting just take the place right away, no matter what the, what it was about. The votes were taken right across the table and that was it. There was no, there was no moving it forward to take it into work session, to get opinions from the public or anything. I really appreciate this. I, you know, I'm thoroughly, I am enjoying this meeting. There you go, I'm enjoying this meeting.
Good for you, I'm scared to death.
Well, I'm good. But you were going next to the top. But, you weren't going next to the job, a virtual job.
It's like if momma's happy, everybody's happy, sir.
That's what my wife said, yes. Yeah, I like what I see. Keep it up, I had some more things, but they, your joke just made me lose it. You caught me off guard with that. I guess, like I say, about this, this volume of this one building, I hope that you all look at these things a whole lot better than the previous Board did. The county shouldn't be a landlord. There's, there's no reason for the county of Form, Dorm County, to be a landlord of anything, a business, an apartment, nothing. We are not, the county is not in the business of being a landlord. I don't know what you can do with this property, you're not going to be able to sell it for what it was bought for. It's just a shame, if this is how the county was run in the past, it's a cry of shame. And I just hope that, yeah, we see more of the questions coming from you all. And I don't want to really get political at this meeting, not with the brand new Board members, but myself, and I think the majority of the citizens in the county would like to see a clean slate of the Board. I think they would like to see a clean slate of the county administrator. I am, I am asking you all not to renew the contract of the county administrator, and I'm asking Mr. Fox and Mr. Carter again to step down, if they have love for this county and the citizens in it. A whole new slate is what, what we need. We don't need any of the old stuff, we need brand new going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other people who wish to speak?
Yes, Jim Grant.
Welcome, Jim.
Congratulations to all the new Board members. Again, Mr. Carter, as I said, and both, I'm aware of what you're going to be going through for the four years. My father-in-law, my stepdad, was chairman of a, in a small town, and 3:00 in the morning getting the call, my neighbor's dog is barking, what can you do about it? I said, "That's not for me, that's not for me." So I feel, feel for your next years.
I'm sorry, can you confirm your name and address, please?
My name is James Jim, 210 of Court, proper wrong. I'm real happy to see what I'm seeing. I'm more impressed about having the work sessions identified and open. I hope those are considered an interaction between whoever is showing up, but not just the Board, so that we can ask questions while you're discussing this. To me, this is one of the biggest problems that I've seen with the Board meetings. I come to these meetings, you just open these things up for discussion, I can't say anything. And I have things that I would like to say about a lot of, a lot of the things that come up. I don't see a way of making sense of that, except normally after the Board meeting is over, and it's too late at that time. So I'm glad to see something like that, if that's, if that's the, what should I say, the method that you're going to do with the work sessions. If we, that attended, are allowed to have some input into what's going on. Now, if that, if that's not legally possible to do, or whatever, I don't know. But, you know, you don't know how else you're going to get that information. I understand, one of the reasons I brought up, again, the comments, just as I did right now, about the, the change in policies. Forty, 48 hours to get that, to read that and go through that, that's a long time, that's not very long, for us that work, I don't work right now, I'm retired, but those people that work, to see that thing, to get a chance to look at it, 48 hours is really not enough time to look at some of this stuff and do a comparison of what was and what is now. So I'd like to see more of that, if we can, for something like that, a little bit more time on that. The other thing I would like to see, and I haven't seen it in the Board, I would like to see a little bit more information about what the Board is planning for next month. With you people on committees, I'd like to see where you're going. I'd like to know what's going on in the committee, in these committee. Maybe there's some times that, you know, if they're open committee, I'd like to go to some of these things, just to see what's going on, like the EDA meetings, or some of these other ones. If they're open, I'd like to be able to go, if there's a reason for to go. I want to take part in this committee, in the, in the community, and in this county. And I'm sure there's another lot of people that would like to do that. But we don't know about these things. We get the paper, I get the, the paper, but by the time I get the paper, it's usually too late. If I look online, it's still too late. So we don't, you know, we as a, as a community, don't know about this stuff. So I would like to see a little bit more of that. Again, I agree with Mr. Baggerley this, I've seen a lot of changes in this Board so far, and I just hope you keep it up, and I appreciate it, it makes a lot of difference to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate you coming in.
Ms. Allen, the committee schedules, there's a calendar on the website that has those...
Yes, and that calendar is actually put together in November of the previous year, so all of the 2020 Board Committee meetings are posted on the calendar, time, location, and most of them also have agendas that are posted on their respective webpages as well.
Yes, and, and to answer you, last year when I decided to run, I had no clue about a lot of those things. And I went on that site, and I would just show up, and I was always graciously invited in. I was not always allowed to have vocal interaction in it, but I learned a lot, and I was never turned down, you know, when I walked through the door, it was this one, you know, I sat down, and I was always welcomed.
Mr. Sam Hahn.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. My name's Sam Hahn, I'm at 301 Northport Road. You'll have to forgive me, I'm sitting here almost time. Mr. Chairman, it's all right, my friend here has a paper for each of the Board members who goes out to present.
Thank you.
I should have came up here earlier when I stood up to begin with, because I was actually going to ask if all these meetings could be moved to a time where your constituents can make it. These meetings at 9:00 in the morning, just, everybody's at work, nobody's going to make that. You want to see these seats filled, start opening it up at 7:00, you'll get more people in here, I guarantee you. Just going to set this right for you.
Jim, would you restate that last statement that you made?
About the, open the meetings up at maybe 7:00 o'clock in the evenings?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you would probably get a lot more people in here, because I guarantee you'd get more people in here if you opened it up at 7:00, because all your constituents are out of work, and a lot of people are actually interested in what goes on here.
Hopefully, we've accomplished that today.
I'm hoping.
The 9:00 AM meetings need to be, because of the reports like from DOD and different things, but by having a second 7:00 AM meeting, I think that should help address what you're, what you're saying as well.
Yeah. The actual reason that we came in was to bring this resolution for you guys. As far as, I had something prepared, but trying to rush here after work to make this meeting, I kind of left it at home, so I'm going to have to do all this from the hip. The reason that we brought this before you is because it is a constitutional right for us as citizens to have a militia. We thought about calling it an organization, because basically what we wanted to do was to be able to help the community. We wanted to have trained personnel that would be there to help with mass casualties if that were to happen. It would be kind of an auxiliary force for law enforcement, things of that nature. When you hear the word militia, there's a lot of horrid meaning that goes with it. The word militia to me, the first thing I think of is like Oklahoma City bombings and church shootings, things of that nature. But the reality of it is, those were more domestic terrorist groups than they were militias. A real constitutional militia is a right that we have as citizens. It was one of our God-given rights, when you look at it, in the Constitution, as well as the state Constitution. There's, when you read down through this, there's several things that we put in there, because back in December, I believe it was the 10th, I made a statement about being able to offer a concealed carry course for the people in this county. Well, I received a nice letter from the county administrator, saying that that course was over, at a fee of $75. That's unacceptable. All these laws that they're trying to pass in the state for public safety, public safety should be something that we're garnering to them, not something that we're trying to force on them. And so I think, I've tried to get a hold of the Sheriff's Department several times over the past few months, and have heard nothing but crickets. So, one of the things that I think that we would be able to put in there was, I think the training course is $375, if the county could pay that, have that, these go down to the NRA building, get their certification, that could be a class that we could offer for free to the citizens, once a month maybe. It's just small things like that, that would actually garner, or help make things more, I guess, improve community safety. But, and that's pretty much all I have, I wanted to put that on the table and see if that would be something that we probably get you guys to vote on. If there's any other questions that you have, I'd be willing to answer.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Fox?
No.
Mrs. Carter?
I was going to say, I think the chair's here, might be a good opportunity...
Can I comment? Do I have a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
We're actually already looking into providing classes for the community. Yeah, I've only been in seven days. Give me, give me a couple, couple minutes, and then I'll start having some done.
Well, as I said, I understand you just took the wrong, so I'm about putting blame, I'm just saying...
No, I'm just saying, you gave us time to get it implemented. But we're looking to actually make our gun holders more safe. That's what we're looking to do, we're not looking to take away rights, we'll never take away rights, but we will make sure we give the support to make you safer.
Mr. Carter? Yeah, that was the one thing that I did want to add, the, the other point of this was going to be to, if you run a constitutional militia, it's actually beholding to the people. There's no one man in control of a militia. Therefore, you as the Board Supervisors would actually be in control of the training and the things of that nature, that, so it wouldn't fall under one man's control. It's actually more in a defensive type role. It has no military backing whatsoever, it's more of a defensive role that would be at the command of the unit.
Emergencies, national, or, you know, like disasters and stuff like that, you guys can activate the local militia to work under the Sheriff's Department. Thank you. Mr. Carter, do you have a comment?
No.
Mrs. Evans?
When I, when I, when I hear militia, I am one of those people that, that think a lot of things. I'm past military. I want, I would want to know, who's running it, how is it run, who's, who's training people, how are they being trained, what certificates do they carry, are they, are they actually a group of people that's all armed and carry guns? And they are to protect us, I understand that, but it just brings on this whole image that maybe I'm afraid of.
Right.
And frankly, sir, I'm not afraid of anything. Walking in here is like walking in fire for me today. It will get better every day, but I'm super concerned about the people that you're going to be representing as a militia. And it's, I understand that it's everybody.
Right. Well, that's why I said if there were any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them, because there's, the other reason I wanted to bring it before the county, is because whether you all know it or not, they're spreading up everywhere. And this was my way of heading that off. If, by heading this off, we can get them to give us permission to background check individuals and actually vet them, to make sure that they are capable of following orders from someone other than just themselves. We've actually met with a, he's a former Marine, who's heading up a militia down south. I met with him over, I guess it was this past weekend, to find out how they're structuring things, how they're making sure things, that people are getting vetted, to make sure that they're not creating a physical hazard that it is.
Their background checks are being ran through the state police, so if they have penalties, they can't possess a gun, and they obviously can't train, so we follow the law.
Well, there, there are lots of questions, and there's going to be lots of meetings before we ever even consider doing something.
Absolutely right.
Even if we do, I'm, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not necessarily against it, but there's a lot of controls that have to be put in place, and frankly, sitting here, we're not ready for that. So we need to be educated, just like, y'all are talking to people, you're doing, you're putting it together, now you've got to talk, let us talk with you, so we can understand exactly what you're doing.
Well, and that's, that's what today was, just...
It's an information, it's a ground...
To bring you the resolution that we found, and that was the resolution that several other counties have passed, and then to be able to answer questions from you, I still, I'm learning things on a daily basis, because I'm still in contact with everybody who's actually doing this through the counties.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Baggerley, if you've got something to say, you're more than welcome to come up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gabbard, that is you, sir. You got a...
69...
Carol Baggerley, 327 Liberty Hall Road, Front Row, Virginia, 22630. I'm here today, and I agree with Mr. Gabbard, that Mr. Stanley's contract should be renewed. You've got two members of the Board up there, it's in a matter of time going off, but they're still sitting there, but they'll leave, it's just a matter of time. You speak about this militia, you've got a newly-elected sheriff, put the militia under the sheriff, he can be responsible for all vetting them and supervising them. And he's a good man, and I'll guarantee he will take care of it. And I want to thank the new Board, it ain't nothing like the old one. Hooray for Dixie.
Thank you, Mr. Baggerley. Any other additional comments from anybody? Yes, sir, more than welcome to come up. Your name and address?
Yes, Tim Ratigan, 6079 St. Wall Jackson Highway. I live in Miss Sherrill's District. Congratulations, and congratulations to Mr. Vane, our new chairman, and of course, Miss Delores Soaks. A while ago, I was handed a little note that was written to me on a, on a napkin, and it says, "There's a new Board in town," with a big old smiling face. I don't know why it was given to me, but he's right, I mean, from what I can see, I can almost say we're not in Kansas anymore, because things are, are very different. I like the idea that our chairman is willing to reach out to the community and take questions in the middle of a meeting. I'm not sure if that's procedurally correct, but it's refreshing, very, very refreshing to see that. Another thing I would like to say, and some of you will remember this... Another thing I would like to say, and some of you will remember this, I don't like litter. I really, really don't like litter. And for some reason, it seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, but 340 seems to get the bulk of it just before you get to the trash or the recycling center. However, I will say this. The people that the county had out, whether it was the artists, LBU inmates, boy, do they do a good job. I mean, they were out there this weekend, and I mean, it was a world of difference. It took them probably less than three days to get that highway looking really, really sharp. And I just wish that people would remember, you know, we do have them on, the books that just covered their nose. And I know that the litter council gives out free cargo nets. I think you could pick them up here at the government office, you know? So I don't understand why people don't take advantage of it. I think you can get free, you can get two of them for free, you know? So maybe we can partner with the sheriff department, and if, you know, a deputy sees a truck rattling down the road with their load uncovered, go over and give them a friendly warning the first time and say, hey, you know, we do have a policy in place that says cover your boat. And then, you know, follow it up with, by the way, we have nets that you can pick up at the government center for your charge. Can you do that, please? Or next time you're going to have to get it taken off, whatever, whatever the case is. And one more thing I would like to add is with the young lady who had questions about attending all of the committee meetings and stuff, one thing that might help, and I'm not sure if you got it on your website, and I don't think I've seen it, there's a little button that you click that says, "Keep Me inform." And you type on that button, and it can already done automated if you can, you know, insert it, and you type in your name and your email address. And once a month, you know, a calendar of the latest committee meetings are sent out to everybody on that list. And then everybody who's concerned about what's happening in Warren County will get that monthly notice, and they can plan accordingly as to whether they want to attend or not. And once again, thank you for running. Thank you for stepping forward to give of your, your time and your sweat. And maybe someday, you may, you would give a little bit of your blood. But I have a feeling it's going to be a very interesting year. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good morning to all of you. My name is Paul Aldrich. I live at 256 Orchard Street here in Front Row. I have been impressed this morning by all of you. Don't normally sit in the meetings, but this morning we came for the purpose of trying to get the resolution for the militia. And I've sat here and watched, just what amazes me? You all are putting everything you can towards the community. And I appreciate that more than I can say. And I'm sure that everyone else does. As we were, as Sam was going over stuff, and we were trying to work our way through this whole Second Amendment mess that the state has created, we've looked at every possibility we can. We've been doing all kinds of research. I personally have been working with the town council, with Ms. Thompson, to get this done in the town. I agree with you very much as far as the sounding and what it looks like for militias. I'm 48 years old. I've seen what has happened with militias in the past, and they're a little scary. When we went down Saturday and met with this group, I was impressed with them. They were organized. And they care more about the community than they do trying to arm up and get, you know, get dirty. We all pray that we never come to that day where we need them. At the same time, as a community, when things go wrong, such as weather, or we have flooding or something like that, the militia would be someone that could step in and help out. Not necessarily as a militia. We could call in a community group to help. We could set things up so that they could work with the police department, with you. However, I would encourage you to let us help you and let us work with you to try and find a good way to set things up to help our community. That is really all I have to say. I thank you again. And please keep up the good work.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
We have already stated.
I'm Sheriff Butler. And I'll just give Warren County as my address, because I've been all through it for the last week.
Could you state your name and address?
Warren County, Sheriff Butler. We, I actually ran on developing a better auxiliary. It works in many districts all across the country. It helps us, it can help us with our overtime. It brings more community policing throughout our county. Citizens advisory groups and so forth, which we would be reaching out. Like, I plan on attending your town hall with you to answer questions. And I open that to each and every one of you. And I will also, myself or my command staff will be there to answer any questions to your, to our constituents. As far as the auxiliary, though, I really believe it needs to be run through the sheriff's office. And I think it's also a better term than militia, because militia does scare some people. But we can get trained individuals that are background checked thoroughly to include polygraph and your analysis, which everyone in the sheriff's office will be or has been as of right now. We are in the process of doing that. I have no issues with it. I think it helps us. But we, they have to be vetted completely, and they have to be for the people. And that's what we really want to make sure happens, that everyone is for the people, not an agenda. So that's where I stand with that. And we will be working on it to include the concealed carry. I'm not about taking anyone's rights and never will be, and I swore by that when I ran and when I took my oath. So what we're already looking into is how we can provide safety classes to include concealed carry to the public by trained officers within our agency. Because that's a service that I think should be put out there and by our trained officers. So, any questions?
Well, I have one, just to address Mr. Rattigan's about the trash, because I live in there, so I, I too see it. And I too don't understand why somebody has to throw stuff out. And it's not, it's not necessarily throwing it out the window. It's falling off the loads. And ours that we dug, we did pass on, they did do a wonderful job. Few days. Might have to do it again, but it does look really good right now. But yes, if we could look at, and I'm not looking necessarily to have everybody give them a ticket, but maybe some lines, and the information about the, that they can come down and get a free cover.
Well, I can tell you, in the last seven days, I've seen a morale boost within the sheriff's office that, to me, is phenomenal. And I believe you will see proactive, community-based policing within the near future.
Well, I've seen them by my house, so I appreciate that.
So is there any other, I just wanted to fill that in for y'all. So I may be able to answer some of their questions as well. We are looking into all of that.
Oh, I know, seven days. But since he brought it up and you're here.
I'm with you.
Yeah, might as well for us.
Thank you. I'll be right back.
Additional comment before you leave, Sheriff? Hey, Sheriff? Question for you.
Sheriff Butler.
I know. Well, I called you up the other day and I asked about the SRO program at the school.
Correct.
The people that had called me up just talked to me about the SRO program. They were both very pleased. The SROs were at the schools, and I wanted to thank you personally because that bothered me. Because we need to, we need to make sure that our children are safe. And that's one of the most public visual things that our young people and our future generation are seeing. That the police are there, they're helping, they're becoming friends with their community, and their community is the school.
I agree.
So I wanted to publicly thank you for doing that. And.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
I really don't look at social media. I haven't for about two years. It's probably saved my own life by doing that. Our school resource officers were, were getting all trained and put in the right schools to fit their personality as well. It's not just putting someone who's trained into a school. We want to actually fit the personality of the deputy with the administration and the level of education that's out there. I believe right now, when we first put SROs in schools, they were trained to be SRO and put into a school. We want more seasoned deputies in the schools to provide a better service. But with that being said, first, the very first day of office, our first command staff meeting, we have assigned each deputy with a school. So when they show up, whether it be at midnight, or they show up at six o'clock in the morning, they have a school that they are assigned to. So we now not have just one SRO. We have an entire department of SROs, and we will continue to build off that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baggerley? Oh, okay. Mr. Baggerley, can I ask you to just hang on one second?
Please go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to take anybody out of turn.
I hope this relieves you, must have made all your fears. When you got the hit man that was elected two to one over his opponents, and he's guaranteed you that he will oversee this so-called militia, he's going to put him under his care, and I don't think you have to worry about a damn thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And could you give us your name and address and all that pertinent stuff?
David Rushden. I live at 761 Harmony Orchard Road. One, I want to say, welcome and good luck to the entire board. Being here, I've realized that this is certainly easily a full-time job for all of you. Very impressive. My thought about the public comment period is that I would actually like to see the first public comment period time extended potentially. Not that it would be used to the fullest extent, but when controversial subjects come up, that people would have adequate time to make presentations at the beginning of the meeting as well as the 60-minute period at the end. And I do realize, you know, some people with professionals here will have to pay for their time to sit through it. But sometimes that's necessary. The other thing I do feel, I must say, and I know it is not going to be a popular statement, but the establishment of a armed militia subsidized or supported by the county is not a universally accepted idea within the county. And that's the end of that statement. Thank you. And best of luck with your.
Thank you for visiting, ladies. Any initial comments from anyone? Public hearing, our public presentation comment period is now closed. Do we have a motion for the close session?
Yes, I have it. I move the board entering to a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the discussion and consideration of the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, and resignation of a specific public officer of the public body. I further move that discussion be limited to the Warren County Planning Commission and the Warren County Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Holders in favor?
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats? Aye. Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Cullors? Mr. Fox?
Aye.
We're now in closed session.